Okay. And then after that, it hits the street on spring. And then act is actually. Do they, and then act is that petition apply if you clear it? What's the answer?
I know.
Yeah, I was gonna say, when did they, yeah.
No, apply for it.
How are you thinking?
You're gonna like the present.
How's everybody doing?
Great, how are you?
Good.
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 How's everybody doing?
Great, how are you?
How's everybody doing?
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 Palpable. They were so engaged, any room you went to, there was involvement with everyone. Something that I can't remember ever seeing in any of the professional development that I have attended in my career. So I say again, kudos to the planning staff who did all of that work and to all the presenters who did an amazing, an amazing job. Everyone was so engaged and again, like they said, came away with a lot of valuable tools going forward. Isn't that what professional development is supposed to be about? Providing tools for our teachers going forward? Absolutely. So I think my comment when I first entered the building was my perception of professional development meetings was five minutes of information jammed into an hour. And I was corrected immediately and they're saying, "No, no, it's not like that this time." And he was absolutely right. It wasn't like that at all. It was an actually wonderful setting and I'm sure if you, to a person, if you spoke to any of the teachers who were in attendance, they will say the exact same thing. This could have gone on for two hours, I'm sure, interviewing the attendees. And so again, I say kudos to you. It's going to be a tough act to follow. I don't know if you're going to be able to follow that up very much, but again, congratulations.
Thank you.
Ms. Dougherty?
Thank you, Your Honor. Just a couple of things. We always talk about sharing best practices. I mean, we have really great educators in the city and they take on challenging work every day, as you know. This is an example. I think we're starting something here that's going to be a legacy going forward. We should be doing this every year and schools should be excited about being able to participate, as one of the speakers said, you know, to advance their own leadership abilities, to be a presenter or to share the good work that's being done in their classroom, in their schools, because the relevancy of it, you know, many of our teachers are facing the same challenges throughout the district. And to be able to share those best practices where they have success with their colleagues, I think it's a great opportunity and we definitely should make this an annual event. And I'll have to squeeze time in my budget to catch the next one. Thank you. Thank you.
All set?
No, I need one more thing, ma'am. I'm sorry. I forgot the main thing. It's our staff. These principals can tell you, they'll tell you straight up, it's the best staff around. I just got reelected again and I'm maybe the only one that keeps saying that teachers are underpaid. I have no problem with that comment. Maybe it's because I was a prison guard and I see where we're spending all that money on the 4 million people we have incarcerated. We're starting to spend money where it belongs, right down here in the schools. Mayor, nice job. You didn't gavel me tonight and I appreciate that, really.
I was thinking about it.
Oh, thank you. Ms. Martin?
Thank you very much. Just one final comment and I think it piggybacks on what my colleagues have been saying. You know, as Ms. Dougherty had referenced, here in this room, we have been talking for years about the concept of kind of seeing the pockets of innovation that were happening across our district, because we do, we hear about these wonderful specific projects or initiatives or protocols that are being put in place. And the idea being of being able to take that expertise within our own district and really highlight it so that the entire district can benefit from it. You know, I have, I'm in kind of the social service world. I've suffered through a lot of professional development too. So I can appreciate that when there's professional development that is concrete, real, tested in our own laboratory of the Lowell Public Schools and then shared in a professional and engaging way, that is no small accomplishment and I think it's really very impressive. And I'm very, very appreciative to the founders who came up with this idea and drove it home. I'm a big fan of a logo. Good for you. I think it makes everything real. So just appreciation, I know, from all of us on the committee and I'm sure from all your colleagues who benefited from this. Thank you very much.
Mr. Nutter?
I just want, I just wanted to echo, you know, most of the comments that were here. I was at the work in the polls when the presentations got over and there were a couple of teachers who came over and they were so excited, they just could not stop telling me about it and how great they thought that was. And whoever put this video together, we should make sure that we put that not only on our website, but use that as a recruiting tool for teachers, because this was, I mean, you did exactly what you set out to do. You made this a professional conference. Any conference that, you know, some of us have attended, it's laid out and the presentation that you just gave us to show reflects that work and you all should be commended for what you have done. It's an excellent, excellent job.
On behalf of the school, of the school committee, we want to thank you for the effort that you've shown us. Sometimes, you know, being in the school committee, you try to set a direction. You want to accomplish certain goals. You want to make sure our students get the best education possible. You want to make sure our teachers are supported. This is an excellent example. I want to commend the administration for supporting what you're doing. And the thing that I want to do is make sure, and all of us want to make sure that you speak up to ensure that we give you the support that you need to do things like this, because this is what it's all about. Okay, so thank you. Thank you very much.
If I could, Mr. Mayor, as a point of privilege, these four principals embody what we call norm number one in the district and that's to make sure we have fun. Schools should be fun. These four leaders do the right work in the right way and also make sure they have fun while they're doing it. And if you haven't met David Anderson, this gentleman puts forth the best snow day videos and announcements. I don't know who did that rap for you, the one that you were rapping while you were on last year's video. I didn't know there was a snow day rap. I'm out of the loop on that. I'm assuming you didn't write it. He's got a number of these. So if anybody's interested in notifying your constituents of a snow day, feel free to pull David's videos.
My only problem is they're too young.
Mr. Hoi? Good, ma'am.
Okay.
Much.
Well, let's not get carried away. Thank you. Thank you, everybody. Next, we have, I need a motion to accept the place and file the regularly scheduled meeting minutes of December 4, 2019. Need a motion accepted by Ms. Martin. Second by Ms. Hoi. All in favor? Thank you. Then we have permission to enter. Mr. Superintendent?
Yes, we bring forth to you a number of contracts of permission to enter. Recommendation as approval as written.
I don't know if you heard Ms. Martin's request. Can we take the permission to enter separately?
Okay. Mr. Superintendent?
Thank you. I believe Ms. Martin is asking us to remove
Community teamwork.
Community teamwork, which is listed twice in your packet on page two. The first is with community teamwork for the sum of $30,000 to provide homeless transportation for Lowell Public School students who now reside in temporary housing outside of the assigned school zone. The second is for $172,425 and it's to amend the existing contract to provide full day, year-round, high-quality preschool instruction to 60 children using Lowell Public Schools pre-K curriculum, access to support services, and professional development. The first is provided with the transportation budget, the second with the grant.
Motion approved. Second by Mr. Hoi. Roll call.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Nutter?
Yes.
Ms. Semiaris?
Yes.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Ms. Dougherty?
Yes.
Mr. Hoi?
Yes.
Six sheyes, one absent. Approved.
Next, Mr. Superintendent?
Thank you. The remainder of those contracts are listed within your packet. Staff's available to answer any questions for any of the remaining items.
I need a motion. Motion approved by Mr. Nutter. Motion to accept by Mr. Hoi. Roll call.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Nutter?
Yes.
Ms. Semiaris?
Yes.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Ms. Dougherty?
Yes.
Mr. Hoi?
Yes.
Seven yeays. Approved.
Thank you. Next, we go to motions. First motion by Ms. Dougherty, December 18, 2019. Request the superintendent provide the committee with a report on the staffing positions and number of employees impacted that were not evaluated or only partially evaluated during the 2018-2019 academic year and the reasons, if known, why those evaluations were not completed. The report also should include whether any positions are not scheduled to be evaluated during the coming academic year and if so, what plans are in place to remedy any challenging going forward. I need a second on this by Ms. Martin, Ms. Dougherty?
Thank you, Your Honor. I think the motion pretty much speaks for itself, but I would like to state that I am a firm believer in the benefit of annual substantive evaluations, whether you are an academic organization or a private business, whatever kind of a structure, a hierarchy you have. Employees need to meet with their leadership and understand what they're doing well and areas they need to improve and also to be able to express where they want to go professionally, what needs to happen to go to the next step on the rung of their career. So I do have some concerns. I know that we negotiated, this committee here negotiated, an agreement with our unions. I believe it was a 9% raise over four years and one of that areas was, had to do with our paraprofessionals. You know, were we doing a val, we were not doing evaluations of paraprofessionals. In fact, I don't think we had even agreed on a clear job description. So part of the impetus of this motion is to get an update on some of those areas. We also recently added some new positions, management positions, to the facilities director. Mr. Underwood now has two facility managers helping him with the tremendous task of managing the facilities of all our buildings. The custodians are also another group that traditionally have not been evaluated. So my intention with this motion is to get that kind of broad overview of what are the other roles that are being evaluated or not, or half evaluated, and then to look for how we are going to move forward, because I think it is very important that we, as a district, evaluate every member of our staff. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Mr. Hoi?
I just want to make one comment about evaluations. I went through them in the Army and I went through them as a state prison guard. And we had a system that would, like, they would give you meets. He meets this and he meets that. They'd never give you, if you were the best, let's say you were the best, you'd never get exceeds. They just wouldn't give it to you. So I have a problem with evaluations sometimes, because I believe we should let children, students, especially high school students, to have a voice and let them be part of evaluations. I always felt that. I think I should be able to evaluate my boss. Why should my boss only evaluate me? That's what I think, because leadership, to me, is everything. And where we're getting new principals coming up and they're getting, what they say, more power, they're supposed to have all the power from Edra Farm and now I'm hoping that they really have all the power to do things for their own school. I like this system. I like everything the school committee has done so far. And I'm just saying with evaluations, I think it's something we have to be careful of. I think we evaluate the superintendent. I can't wait to evaluate him. I really can't. I'm like biting my nails over it. I want to evaluate you right now. I'm always in a rush. But I can just say this, there's questions about that for me. I just have a few concerns, nothing major. I believe you're right. But I also believe a principal, once they have that feeling that they really are in charge of their building, if they have a weak link, maybe they're going to start to do something about it. Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate it.
But you also understand all of this, the superintendent has to negotiate that with the unions and whatnot.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Ms. Dougherty?
Sorry, I just wanted to add one more comment that when Mr. Hoi mentioned students, imagine if we didn't evaluate our students. You didn't have tests or quizzes or scores or reports that they had to write. I mean, it's just, and I agree with you that we need to have an assessment that's fair, that, you know, gives an opportunity for communication between both parties, but we have to have some assessment tools for our staff. Thank you.
Just one more thing. I know you don't want to let me, Mayor, but I have to. When I see a teacher at the high school, I won't say his name. I'm going to stay off names, Mayor. But when I see a teacher that I know is unbelievable, 462 sick days, every student I ever interviewed in my life tells me, "Oh, he's the best. You'll never find something like him." I want that person to be told that. He should know that in an evaluation. And that's all I'm saying, to say everybody meets a certain goal. Everybody, give every one of us meets, you know? I think Ms. Martin exceeds her job here. That's how good of a job I think she's done. I know I meet, if I'm lucky. But there is that in evaluations. I used to get mad when I, I had the Experant Infantry Badge, something that during peacetime is the highest award you can get. I go up for a promotion, I'm denied and I, "Why?" But evaluations, Mr. Hoi, evaluations. So if they gave me exceeds where I should have got them, today I might be still in the service. Thanks again, Mayor.
Okay. Next, we have, we're all set? Mr. Lay?
Thank you. I just want to add that for the two years that I've been serving on the school committee, I never had a chance to evaluate any superintendent. So Mr. Hoi, Mr. Nutter and I, we missed that job of ours, yeah. So I have no problem supporting that, I mean, Ms. Dougherty. I just feel that, I don't know what we do with the report. I feel that we don't want to get too much into, too deep into staffing evaluation. I would think that the manager, the principal and all those people, they could evaluate the staff. And I feel that, I don't know what the school committee should be involved with.
The school committee, Mr. Lay, has the right to issue what their desires are. It's the superintendent negotiating with the union as to how that will stand. But the school committee sets up the mission, so to speak, of the school system and its expectations. So that's the relationship.
Sure. I have no problem, problem supporting it.
Yeah, okay. Mr. Dakota?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would exercise a high level of caution of having students evaluating our staff, because at their ages, their ability to get back at a teacher would not work out very well. So I would caution us to not necessarily go down that road. It's not, it's not the same when you're talking about, in a college level, where your students are much older and more mature and able to evaluate their professors. But at the elementary level, they don't know, they love their teachers most of the time. And so to have the children evaluating teachers, I'm not sure that would be a great idea personally. But that's it.
The thing is, this is a matter, I mean, we could, if it's the wish of the committee to go on with this discussion, but this is something that should be brought up, the Subcommittee on Personnel, where, you know, open discussions can take place.
Mayor, I didn't say elementary students. I said high school students. That's all I said.
That's fine.
I said high school age, because they're very smart.
But you had the discussion, but the issue is, I think, next year with the new school committee, the superintendent will be offering the chance for the school committee to have their input with the Personnel Subcommittee. Okay? Thank you. Next, we have a motion by Mr. Dakota. Request superintendent to update us on any new policies going forward on bullying. And then a second by Ms. Dougherty, Mr. Dakota?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think, again, it speaks for itself and I'm just curious as to, has anything come down the pike to help us going forward in the bullying issue? And that's the basis of that question.
Okay. All set. Thank you. Next, we have a Subcommittee report regarding Mr. Nutter's chairperson, Policy Subcommittee meeting.
Mr. Nutter?
The Policy Subcommittee met and we looked at a few issues. We talked about the enrollment issue, the preschool enrollment. We covered a lot of ground. We talked about the kindergarten lottery, the wait lists, the wait lists for grades one through eight, the sibling preferences. We discussed the extended rights of students with the McKinney Juventus designation, foster care students, students with special needs and how that affects placements within certain schools on a case-by-case basis. And we talked about transfers, when people want to transfer out of school. The focus is going to be to try to make the school assignment policy more clearer and more understandable. And it is, it is not an easy thing to do. There were just so many variations that play into it. And the law, especially regarding some of those special interest students I just mentioned, also plays a large role in it. So I believe that the first regular scheduled school committee meeting in January, there will be a proposal to bring forth a new policy. I think Latifah Phillips will be bringing that forward. The school committee probably won't have a chance to meet in Subcommittee beforehand, but because of the enrollment time periods coming up, it is something that's going to have to be addressed and discussed here on the floor at a school committee meeting as opposed to a Subcommittee meeting. And what's going to be proposed are just some basic, simple changes this year. But there is an opportunity to keep this discussion going and review and maybe look at the policy more with the new Subcommittee, as a new two-year term starts. So it was a very good, it was a very good meeting. It was a lot of information. There were just so many things involved as far as, you know, well, I signed up on this date and she didn't sign up until that date and she got in and I didn't get in. You know, it's a very challenging experience and it's a very frustrating experience. And there really is a desire by this administration to try to clarify and really try to open up and let people know everything that gets involved in this. So I urge my committee members to keep that in mind for the, for the January meeting and be prepared for that. And that's, but I'd like to submit that as a report of progress.
All right. I need a motion to accept this as a report of progress. And a second, Mr. Hoi and Mr. Dakota? Do you have a question, though, on this?
Yeah, I just want to make a comment. I attended that meeting and a lot of great things are going to happen there, too. If you go back about three years ago, I had a lot of issues with the Resource Center. And since we have Ms. Duder and her staff in there now, I know it's come a long way, like a lot of other places in the system that have been fixed. School committee here should all be giving themselves a pat on the back. We went through some tough times. But the Resource Center, to me, is working really well. I was concerned that night about separating children and I gave an example. Some woman's up near George's Deli on Gorham Street and her kid's going to the Butler. But she also had two other children over at the Robinson and both of those children had IEPs and they had special needs. And she's a single mom that has to get those kids after school and she didn't want to put any of them on buses. She has to drive over to the Robinson School and back and forth and she had a struggle and they fixed that lady's issue. Now all her kids are on this side of the bridge. Those are things about five years ago that weren't happening very easily. So I think the Resource Center, again, thanks for the great job they're doing also. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. Ms. Dougherty?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'm not sure if the chair mentioned this about the preschool enrollment, the way, the, when you would lose your seat. Did you do talk about that? Because I think it's important.
I, I, all right.
So if I, so you didn't, I'd like to, the other thing we talked about that I think is very important for people to realize, the current situation with our preschool students is that as long as you don't miss 15 consecutive days of school, they hold the seat for you. Now, that's a lot of consecutive days of school. So what's happening is we have students, they're preschool, so it's not mandatory that they go to school. So they're missing all kinds of days. They're really not taking full advantage of the program. So the suggestion, the recommendation, and we'll get all the details at the January meeting, but the recommendation is to clarify the attendance policy. Start our focus on attendance at the preschool level, which we all felt strongly made a lot of sense. You know, as the mayor knows, since we've put that focus on you have to come to school and brought it down to the elementary grade, that follows through the district and we've seen improvements in our attendance at the high school and also it impacts the dropout rate. So the idea to bring it right down to the preschool level makes perfect sense. And that was one, one of the other key things that we talked about at the meeting that I wasn't sure that you had addressed it. So I think it is worth people realizing that we're not looking to, you know, have empty seats. If you're not committed to getting your child to preschool, there's a child out there who could benefit. And the other thing that we talked about was the fact that when we lost preschool transportation, right now, it's only special education students who get transportation. We lost a lot of students that way, too. And so we're going to be looking at some of these issues a little bit more closely, see how we, because we all know, the earlier we can get kids engaged in school, the better they're going to do. So I just wanted to point that out. Thanks.
Mr. Hoi?
Just a quick question about the preschool. Isn't that lottery? Is that how you get in, you get into the preschools? Is it by lottery?
Ms. Desmond, can you provide response?
It is. It's by lottery, right? Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
You all set? Okay. All right. Mr. Nutter, you all set? The report's finished. Thank you. Now we go into reports of the superintendent, reports on motion. 8.1 by Mr. Dakota, salvage items. Mr. Superintendent?
Thank you. I would recommend that we take these as a lump sum or itemizing them out as per recommendation or request from the school committee. Each item listed is our new memos and new responses that the school committee can find. However, for record for the community, so they can access these responses at any time, they will find themselves into the response on motion table as the committee is used to receiving. So each itemized response that you see within your packet are new responses that were provided by staff. As you see within each item, when you see the designation CEEO, that means the Chief Equity and Engagement Officer provided that response. By Gerard Nutter means that is Jerry Nutter's motion. And then the item is then listed as well. The attempt here, committee members, is to create transparency in responses, also to create efficiency for the community. You can see there's a number of motions there. So my suggestion, my recommendation to the committee, is that we continue to take these in lump sum, but we itemize them out. And I'm wondering, I guess I would request guidance, if that meets the wishes of the committee. This was an attempt to further meet the desires of the committee with the response.
All right. Any issues? Ms. Dougherty?
Thank you, Your Honor. I want to thank you very much, Superintendent Boyd. This is exactly what I was looking for, because as my colleagues will see, there's a really good report about the environmental sciences education. I want to thank Ms. Desmond for that. It's got a lot of good information in it. Rather than go through it here now, I know that Ms. Martin has called for curriculum Subcommittee meeting. We've had that motion to have a curriculum. I would like to delve into this a little bit more at the Curriculum Subcommittee meeting, when that is scheduled. And there was also report card stuff we need to talk about when the Curriculum Subcommittee gets together. But this is what I had in mind, because then it's clear to the viewing community, here's the report in response to that motion, there's a lot of good substance in the report and we all get to see it. That was my intention with that. So thank you very much, Dr. Boyd.
Any other issue? Ms. Martin?
Thank you very much. To echo those same sentiments, I think it's great to get the information back this way so that we can ask some follow-up questions once, once things have been reviewed. I was hoping I could just get kind of a quick synopsis from the Chief Operations Officer on the compensation for substitutes, the findings of that report.
Yes, the findings of the report suggested that the committee would really have to weigh the supply and demand curve. I presented the $10 increase, might not have an appreciable effect. You might get five, you might get 10 more substitutes, but you'd have to weigh that would cost about $200. would cost about $200,000. And, you know, potentially you could look at hiring more paras for that money or some other competing demand. I did provide information that there were increases in the past, but a very large factor in the demand for subs is the compensation paid to tutors. We have a lot of retired teachers who are taking those jobs and even other people are taking those jobs as well. You make $30 an hour doing that, whereas it may be just $15 an hour as a substitute. So there's a lot of factors in there. A lot of other districts are having similar problems and the problems that we're facing this year and other districts are facing don't really seem to be that atypical compared to previous years.
In the comparison of salaries with other districts?
I feel ours are above, are very competitive with other districts. I don't think that's factoring into the lack of subs on a day-to-day basis, all things being equal.
Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Doherty, you heard you.
When we increased the substitute rate, did that get us above the neighboring towns? Because we did that, I don't know, in the last couple of years, right? I mean, are we at or above what other towns are paying for substitute teachers?
We're at where other towns are generally on average.
So people might think it's more challenging to be in an urban district than to pick up a classroom in Chelmsford? Maybe, maybe it would be worth looking at. And are we short on tutors or is it just substitute teachers that we have a shortage of?
I would say the available personnel are gravitating towards tutor positions. For example, the retired teachers because they're making $30 an hour, whereas they're just making just over $100 to be a substitute for the day. So if I was a retired teacher, I'd obviously probably gravitate towards being a tutor.
Right. But that's a limited number. We have a limited number of tutors available for our jobs throughout the district and they're part-time roles, correct?
Correct. But it would be knocking out that whole segment that potentially could be substitutes. So it's very qualified substitutes.
Right. But I think that above and beyond our tutor staff, we need substitutes. That's where the, that's where the shortage is. Thank you.
Mr. Hoyt.
Yeah, I didn't know we went by Mrs. Doherty's motion. I wanted to say something about it if I could real quick. I didn't know until I asked her, the environmental sciences, we're going to try to teach children to be good to the earth in plastic. And then I look at all of us up here, Ms. Doherty's the only one with a safe drink. The rest of us have plastic. I think we have to teach the adults so we can teach our children, especially about recycling. So I think that's a great motion. I just wanted to, I'm looking at us with all this plastic. It's a big issue. I am someone that believes the, in the, what do they call it? Climate melting? Help me out, somebody.
Climate change.
Climate warming or whatever. I've been remembering snowstorms over my head since I've been a little kid because I'm a roofer. I don't know where the warming's coming from. Tomorrow morning, call me up and tell me how warm you are when you go start your car up. So we have some big issues, but I did meet someone recently at that party about this environment and I'm starting to really turn on that issue. I think next time I come, I'm going to have a cup, just like Ms. Doherty. So thank you. I mean that too. Some of us have to be taught. But getting back to the motion that we're on now, substitutes, those tutors that work $30 an hour for three hours, the more you can get of them, the better you are too. I mean, most of them are sitting with children that have reading problems. And I've seen a lot of that work. I looked at it over their shoulders and watched them. Tutors are huge. When it comes to subs, I have a problem with giving any more money to the bottom-level subs, meaning like if you only have a high school diploma like myself. I want someone with at least an associate's. And we do have a major problem, I don't think a small problem, with substitutes. I remember this day very well, May 15th of last year. Lowell High had 58 teachers out of work sick. 58. And that's not a big number when the teachers are probably between 300 and 400. I don't have the number. We maybe have that many teachers. But we were 17 subs shy. Tells you how big that issue is. That's a lot. I called the Robinson School something much smaller. They had about 17 people out and they were like nine subs shy, even just in a middle school. So I think we need to advertise up in New Hampshire. That's where I think we might be able to get some subs. Their economy might not be as good as our economy. Around here, people don't want to take that job as a sub and only clear $50. There's no doubt. But if we are going to raise the money, I think we should raise it probably quite a bit, but at least make sure they have an associate's degree. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, we're all set. So I need a motion to accept the reports of the superintendent, eight one through eight five, as a report of progress. Motion by Mr. Dakota, seconded by Mr. Hoyt. All in favor? Thank you.
Aye.
Next, we have home education. I need a motion to approve for home education by Mr. Lay, seconded by Mr. Hoyt.
Quick question too, Mayor.
Yes, go ahead.
If someone can give me an answer. I believe, I know I should be looking through my computer. I believe we're up to maybe a total of 80. Does anybody have the number that has it? I remember, it's 80 right now? Now, that last year, I think we were about 50, right? So 50, 55. I forget exactly that, but we've had an increase of about 30, I think. I'd like to see that, if you could find out what the increase has been on homeschooling. Thank you.
Okay. Roll call.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Nutter?
Yes.
Ms. Samaras?
Yes.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Hoyt?
Yes.
Seven yeas approved.
All right, now we're in new business. We have a motion to post the social emotional learning coordinator. Need a motion to post by Mr. Nutter, seconded by Mr. Hoyt. Any discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Nutter?
Yes.
Ms. Samaras?
Yes.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Hoyt?
Yes.
Seven yeas approved.
And next, we have a motion to approve the disposal of surplus supplies. Need a motion to approve by Mr. Dakota, seconded by Mr. Hoyt. Any discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Nutter?
Yes.
Ms. Samaras?
Yes.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Hoyt?
Yes.
Seven yeas approved.
Next, we have budget transfer, motion to approve the budget transfer of $609,998.23. Need a motion to accept the transfer by Ms. Martin, seconded by Mr. Dakota. Any discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Nutter?
Yes.
Ms. Samaras?
Yes.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Hoyt?
Yes.
Seven yeas approved.
Next, there's some revisions here. We need a motion to approve the public complaints policy revision. I need a motion to accept by Ms. Doherty, seconded by Ms. Martin. Any discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Nutter?
Yes.
Ms. Samaras?
Yes.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Hoyt?
Yes.
Seven yeas approved.
Okay, next, we have visit to school policy revision. So I need a motion to approve the visits to school policy revision. Need a motion to accept that. And Mr. Nutter, seconded by Ms. Martin. Any discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Nutter?
Yes.
Ms. Samaras?
Yes.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Hoyt?
Yes.
Seven yeas approved.
Next, we have a motion to accept $675 donation of a scoreboard to the Butler School from the Ecum medical athletic association. Need a motion to accept by Ms. Doherty, seconded by Mr. Dakota. Discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Nutter?
Yes.
Ms. Samaras?
Yes.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Hoyt?
Yes.
Seven yeas approved.
Next, we have a motion to approve four conference requests. Need a motion to accept all by Mr. Hoyt, seconded by Mr. Dakota. Roll call.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Nutter?
Yes.
Ms. Samaras?
Yes.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Hoyt?
Yes.
Seven yeas approved.
Real quick, this is the gentleman from the ROTC right here, right? I just want to say to you, sir, I'm not great on names and I'm not supposed to say anybody's name, so I'm going to stay to that point. Right now in Lowell, our track, cross-country track team, they're all world. We have some things that are coming to Lowell that are unbelievable. I think basketball's next. But the ROTC, which you've done since I've been around here, you guys have done a great job. Keep up the good work. Keep bringing home those trophies to Lowell. My granddaughter's at you Lowell because of you and some of your staff has helped me. No, thank you very much, Mayor. Thanks for the time.
No, their work has always been.
Appreciate it.
More than commendable. Thank you. All right. Next, we have professional personnel. LSAA donated sick days. The members of Lowell School Administrative Association give a request to donate 20 sick days to Gina Trombley, Lowell STEM Academy Guidance Counselor. Need a motion to approve by Mr. Hoyt, seconded by Mr. Dakota. Roll call.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Nutter?
Yes.
Ms. Samaras?
Yes.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Hoyt?
Yes.
Seven yeas approved.
Okay. I guess I have to, before we adjourn, call Ms. Doherty up.
Oh, I can, you want me to?
Pardon?
If we could, and let me, if I could, as a point of privilege, then I would really appreciate the honor of yielding the floor to our Vice Chair. Tonight's meeting is a bit bittersweet in some ways. This is the last meeting for our esteemed colleagues, committee members Lay and Nutter and our Honorable Mayor Samaras. I will tell you, there is a word across the superintendency that says you will never get a better committee than the one that hired you. So while we're heading into the holiday season, which is certainly joyous in many ways, and while we look with excitement to the new committee members and new ideas that'll be coming to the floor, it is also a sad time to be losing those of you that have led this school committee and governed this school district through some turbulent times and have provided me the guidance and advice and support to ease into this community and to assume the responsibilities of the superintendency. In honor of your service to this community, our staff has put together a little bit of a tribute for you as committee members. Mr. Mayor, I would like the privilege of the floor to share this video tribute. And then I would like to yield the floor to the Vice Chair, who has some words on behalf of the committee as a full body.
Thank you.
Wednesday, December 18, 2019, marks the final meeting for three members of the Lowell School Committee. Dominic Lay, Jerry Nutter, and Mayor William Samaras. Dominic Lay is proud of making history back in 2017 when he became the first Asian American elected to the school committee. Lay is also proud of creating a scholarship, which annually rewards Lowell High graduates for their community service.
I am so honored for this opportunity to serve you and the city of Lowell. Having that free-thinking process allows me to do what's right and at the very least to do what's fair. Always the best for students.
Jerry Nutter was also elected in 2017. He has been a fiscal watchdog during his tenure, saying the financial status of the school department was his chief concern. Nutter also brought forth motions for a district-wide recess policy and the use of blizzard bags.
In 2017, when running for this office, besides the location of Lowell High School, my biggest concern centered on the fiscal state of the Lowell School Department. We've straightened out the fiscal chaos and put policies and controls in place.
As part of his duties as serving as the 91st Mayor of the City of Lowell, William Samaras has chaired the school committee. Samaras said one of his signature initiatives has been establishing Lowell as a city of learning on a global scale. Samaras is also proud of the progress that has been made with the Lowell High School building project.
I'm proud of the progress we have made on the Lowell High School project. Funding has been approved at both the local and state levels, as well on the way to seeing the construction of the finest state-of-the-art high school in all of Massachusetts. Also, as the Chair of the school committee, I'm proud to report that the Lowell Public Schools are now financially stable.
The Lowell Public School District would like to thank outgoing school committee members, Dominic Lay, Jerry Nutter, and Mayor William Samaras for their hard work and service to the students, families, and staff of the Lowell Public Schools.
Your Honor, as Vice Chair, I'd like to just take a few minutes on behalf of my fellow colleagues and offer my sincere appreciation for the service of my colleagues and for your time. The most precious gift that we can give is our time. And I want to personally thank Dominic Lay and Jerry Nutter for all the time and hard work you've put into the Lowell Public Schools. And especially to thank you, Your Honor, for the steadfast and calm leadership that you provided through some very difficult times. It's been a tough couple of years, just the finances alone, but a lot of other things. And I think you've really, you've been a strong, fair leader and you've always kept your eye on what's best for the students. And I've really appreciated that leadership. And now, just as a token of our appreciation, I have a little gift for all of you. This is not from me personally.
Excuse me. This is mine.
Aren't they nice?
I, I, Mr. Lay, do you have anything you'd like to say, sir?
Thank you. Well, I have gained more appreciation for the teachers, all the educators in the school building, and as well as superintendent's job and everybody work in the central office. And I wrote a few things I don't want to miss. I just want to express my appreciation for the resident of Lowell. And I really appreciate the people who supported me. I want to thank you for supporting my campaign. Thank you for holding my signs. Thank you for putting my, putting up my yard signs. Thank you for your donation. Thank you for helping me with my campaign flyers. Thank you, everybody. In 2017, there were 5,300, 5,535 people who voted for me and put me on the school committee. I want to thank you, I want to thank you for giving me an opportunity to be the decision worker, maker, I'm sorry, decision maker, and an opportunity to do many right things. And for the first time, the school committee had myself as a representative from a different And for the first time, the school committee had myself as a representative from a different point of view and see what was needed from a different angle. I have made many new friends, especially in this chamber. It has been a wonderful working with all of you. But in the past election, I would like to thank 3,655 voters who attempted to put me back on the school committee. However, we missed the cut by 103 ballots. I feel that the community that I represent is a large percentage of the population in Lowell. I really appreciate that the 3,655 people who voted for me. I'm sorry I let you down because I did not collect enough votes. I am disappointed with the result. However, I feel that it is a whole community that I represent that received the impact of the loss. Well, the past two years has been a great part of my Lowell life journey. The love that I gain encourages me to do more. I really appreciate the...about everything, although I still don't like the part when I was yelled at in the executive meeting following the vote to terminate a superintendent. I thank all of you for your support, your friendship. Thank you. Thank you. It has been a...it has been a privilege for an opportunity to serve. Happy holidays.
Mr. Nutter?
Thank you. I'd just like to echo a lot of what Mr. Lay said. It has been an extreme privilege to serve here for the last two years. I thank the voters. I thank my colleagues. No one person can do anything when you're a school committee member. It takes a committee. And looking back over the last two years, over 87% of the time, this committee voted between five and two and seven and zero. So we very much were a united working committee, no matter how we sometimes were portrayed. There was an issue that did divide us temporarily, but we were united, and we got behind Janine Durkin and that team and Billy Joe and the work that they did to straighten out the finances and carry us through. For the first time in my lifetime, we have hired a superintendent who has brought diversity to the central office, something that Lowell reflects the situation here in the city. We are a very diverse city. It is about time that we brought diversity to the central office. We welcomed and encouraged more participation by our parents, by our community groups, by our community members, something that has been tried here for a long time, and we have accomplished that. They mentioned bringing in the motion for a citywide recess policy. That came from a group, the Justice, you know, the Justice League, the Justice Alliance. Thank you. They are the ones who called us and asked us to come in, met with them, and we brought that forward. We have a lot of good groups that work. We have done a good job working together. It's not often, you know...we are on track right now, thanks to the work of Billy Joe Turner and Superintendent Boyd and his staff. We have the op...we're going to finish this year, not only in the black, but we're going to be able to say that a lot of the accounts that were run down have been brought back up, and that's a major accomplishment. We are in such good shape financially than when I started here, and that's because of the work of this committee, not one person. It's all of us working together, and I hope that continues into the next. It has been an honor and a pleasure serving with all of you, and again, I thank the voters of Lowell.
Mr. Hoi?
Thank you. I'll start with Jerry. I'm not going to say goodbye to Jerry Nutter. I got to be up at 4:30 a.m. to be on City Life with him. He's not going anywhere. I think Jerry's made it very exciting for me. I had a good couple of years working with the guy, and I continue to hope to hear him on his blog and staying effective on the radio and keep doing what you do for the Salvation Army and everything else. Nutter's not going anywhere. So I'm not going to say goodbye to him right now, but I'll just say I thought he did a great job. I've lost two elections in my life. Doesn't feel good when you lose. I've lost twice. I know what it feels like, but I also knows what...know what it feels like to come...make a comeback. And so I'm not going to say much more about Mr. Nutter other than thank you, my grandchildren, my family, thank you. Now I want to get to the other guy, Dominic. Dominic, let me tell you something, buddy. You lost because I told you guys that you got Hillary Clark and Mike Dillon running. I knew two of us were going. I just didn't know which two. But Ben O'Parra came in eighth, and I know a lot of people that work for Ben. I worked very hard for Ben. I still wish Ben was here. He's that good of a human being. But you came in seventh, pal, okay? So don't feel like you're out of it yet. I've already outlived my father by two years. The chances of me making two years are slim. I want you to come to my wake and my funeral. I think I'm going to be cremated, but if that happens, you fall in again. So don't ever think you did bad, Dominic, okay? You didn't do anything bad. You came in seventh. You came in ahead of a lot of other people, and you lost to two great people. We picked up two fantastic people for the school committee. And hopefully someday...hopefully I live longer than that, but I think you got a good shot of falling back in the school committee, so don't give up on yourself, okay? And other than that, Mayor?
Uh-oh.
I'm going to miss being gavelled by you, buddy. I really do. I'm going to miss you. I've known you for a long time, and we went through, I like to say hell, the past two years. We got to get caught up the special head. The athletic department needs an overhaul. There's a lot of things that need to be fixed, in my opinion. Food has to be watched. I'm glad this new 40-year-old superintendent's running around tasting all the food. I wouldn't do it. So again, Mayor, I want to say it's been a pleasure. Nice job.
No, thank you.
Thank you.
Everybody, you know, as mayor, being mayor...some people say being mayor of the school committee is not the easiest job, okay? But the thing is, I'm really honored to have been able to serve as mayor. You know, I worked for the school system for many, many years, and to be able to be in this seat, to be able to help the system in a direction. We started off, it was, we'll say, kind of rough. There were many issues, and it could have broken us apart, but I think the one thing I saw with everybody, whether our opinions were the same or we differed, everybody wanted the same thing, a good education for the children of Lowell, also to ensure that they were safe and that the teachers were supported to be able to do the jobs that they were hired to do. So all of you can be very proud of what you've done. I would only like to...I mean, I don't dwell on the past. What I want to do is talk about the future. I think we've hired a superintendent, and he's brought in the staff, and with the strategic planning that they have and the amount of money that will be coming into this school system, the really...the needed money to come into this school system to help our children, I think this next school committee will have the tools and the superintendent and the staff to be able to really set a direction for our children that will probably make this school system one of the best in the country, if not the state. I just want to commend all of you for the service that you've given to the children of Lowell, and I want to thank you for giving me the opportunity to work with you. As I said, there are some days that are better than other days, but I always knew one thing. Everybody here wanted the same thing. They wanted to ensure that our kids got the best break possible and take that to the bank. That's what makes it all worthwhile. And I also want to thank contributions of our student, you know, being here and being an observer of what's going on. And I want to welcome the new school committee people. You're going to be challenged, but it's a challenge well worth it, so I want to thank you for everything. Mr. Hoi?
I can't forget this either. I'm going to be on City Life with Jerry tomorrow, so we got to be up early. And then I got to be at City Hall again tomorrow at 9 o'clock. I think we're having the meeting on your mayor's Rock Fest, and...
I want to thank you for that.
Well, let me just say something about it. Let me say something about it. There's a lot of women that should get all the credit right now, but Kennedy started it, Ed Kennedy, and this is the third one we had at the Olympia, and was fantastic. You came in early. You left at 10 o'clock at night, and it was one of the best times I've had there out of the three years, without a doubt. I wish I had the figures, but I'm hearing some great things are coming, and we'll find that out tomorrow. But your name's on it. No, it was Bill Samaras's party this time, and I think you did a fantastic job.
We brought it...I mean, here's the thing. We brought in Senator Kennedy also because we made some calls together, but the thing is Andy, yourself, people have to know the work that was done. A lot of work, helping a lot of the people, the bands out, but the enthusiasm I saw. You're right, Mr. Hoi. I mean, at the end of the evening, to see a number of people up there dancing and going, you know, singing along with the bands, it was something that...it was almost magical, I mean, because it was a true Christmas program, the way I saw it.
And the last thing I'll say, Mayor, because I think it's so important to say, I've been sitting here, not as long as some of my colleagues, but I sat in Sapa Savas's living room many, many times and talked about you. I did. I can say that now because he's passed away. I talked about you a lot when my children were there. We haven't seen eye to eye many, many times, but what Jerry said, what we've done as a school committee, to me, is historic. I think it's been great.
Thank you. Ms. Martin, I mean, do we have any idea about the money we raised?
Well, we'll be making the official announcement at the meeting tomorrow, so I'll...you'll get that then. How about that? I'm sorry to end on a cliffhanger. Let me just say dramatically improved from last year.
Okay.
It was a dramatic, dramatic increase in donations.
But if you were to give it, it's just between us. You know?
You're killing me.
Well, thank you, everybody. Mr. Superintendent, you all set?
Thank you, and happy holidays.
To everybody, thank you. Motion to adjourn. Ms. Dougherty, seconded by Mr. Hoi. Thank you.[1702.57]